This will be in the pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Continue the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under the ground, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please remain standing for this moment.
Oh.
Oh, we thank you for giving us this time that we can come out tonight to be a part of the ongoing work of our community. We thank you, Lord, that you can give us help and the inspiration to do so and ask, Lord, that you be with those who have been affected by this virus that's going around. And thank you for this good news that we have on the vaccine front. Be with us as we look through the rest of this evening, guide our decisions in Jesus' name.
Thank you very much.
Okay. On our agenda this evening, I think everybody may have a copy of, uh, on see you guests. Yeah, the guests over there. Yes, and I'm gonna ask if anyone has any additions that they wish to make to our agenda for this evening, if they would.
I have one that would be very quick.
Okay.
If you agree to this. Uh, it's to talk about the beginnings of a welcome package for the community. We talked about this some time back with Jamie Baker and Amanda's helped us. I briefly wanna show what she's done to get us started.
Okay.
Um, I'm okay. I'm okay.
New business that would be you or is that your own work before?
Well, we talked about it before, but we haven't taken any action.
Okay.
And this requires no action other than throw them some.
Okay. Paul.
Um, I, cleaning for the city building.
What about it?
Well, I wanted to maybe talk about getting cleaning service to disinfect.
Cleaning service for city building, okay. Anyone else? The upcoming city's Bonford Parade.
It's all business.
It's all business, isn't it? Okay. When is that again, refresh my memory, Todd?
That is the...
Nineteen.
Nineteen. Okay. Other additions?
Mayor, I don't know if it's new business or old business, but talked about it multiple times about yearly, uh, yearly plans for the future instead of just going month to month. It seems like you're going month to month. I pretty wanna do this next month. I don't know if it's new or old business, but if we could just talk about possibly making...
Long-term planning?
Long-term planning for the city of Creighton instead of monthly planning.
Will we add that on the agenda? Anything else?
Um, did we talk about items that are missing?
It's been brought up and we have some update on some of that, but do we like the remote and that sort of thing? Yes. Um, and we'll get to that in a little bit. Really? Anything else?
Where, uh, I just wanna, well, I guess when we talk about JD's time sheet.
Uh, we have.
Well, now, as, as we thought about that, I've got a small little job to bring up.
What is it? You wanna add it?
I wanna add it, uh, the Bush Hall at 208 and the staking of the property lines, so we can get that property moving.
He talked to me about that, but okay.
It wasn't staked by the realtor? It wasn't staked out by the realtor, by this?
There was ten.
Well, but...
Some of which stacks, some which stacks have been...
Gotcha. He did talk to me about that, but I'll talk with him about that and then I can just, you know, take hold of what he said. Okay. Anything else? All right, going back to the agenda then, is there any, obviously anybody here from law enforcement, so we don't have a law enforcement report this evening?
We have.
I'm sorry, we did not, you're right. We need to approve the agenda now, but we'll be doing... Motion to approve the agenda.
I'll read it second.
And second, if Paul goes in favor, raise your right hand. Okay, motion carried. Michelle, were you a guest on the vote?
I am.
Thank you. Do you have, do you have the minutes of the November meeting? Got a chance to read over?
Um, I have one addition to that.
Okay, just a moment until we... Does everybody got a copy? Yes?
Yes.
Everybody had a chance to read through? Is that, all right, Paul, you had an addition, revision, what?
Yes, um, page... Four, three and four, um, here, uh, number five, Brandon Voekwalker. Um, when we spoke, um, I, I had asked council's attorney if KRS trumped the city procurement policy in ordinance...
By the fourth reading?
Uh, section five, what part do you get, say, Paul?
Section five. After Humphrey, it was just not even added.
Is it page four again?
Right here. What is it?
We're under M, huh?
We're under M.
On, uh, M forty-five, go ahead.
Okay. I asked the attorney if the KRS trumped the city procurement policy in ordinance and he had stated at that time, yes, it did. That needs to be added to the minutes, please.
Okay. One more time, did the city trump, did Trump?
Uh, that's what it said to him.
KRS.
I'm, I have one.
Yes. Okay. Other additions or corrections?
Um, yeah, hey, everyone. On the very last page, uh, I think we just had a wrong date. The special meeting, I think that was, is that December the twelfth?
The special meeting should have been in November, um...
We're in November.
It was the actual...
Um, yeah.
What is the... It was the, we have one on the twelve, the seventeen, the ninth, and the first.
Okay. And, um...
We have a couple of them.
Yeah, and I hate to put more work on you, but do we have minutes for those?
I do. I have, um, one open item I need to gather and gather the, um, the report from the hearing.
Oh, okay, the lady, she did not go transcribe it?
I don't wanna transcribe, that's all that's...
Oh, well, she's got a report from the...
Yeah, I need that, sorry.
Yeah, if we could just have the items and what loaded on.
Yes, yes, exactly. That's what I really need, I need to know how it's brought up, who brought what up, that has, like, so I can do that, too. Okay, so...
What contact, Brandon, has to the contact for group?
I don't know, I keep sort of, I don't even, I asked Brandon one time, but I think he'd been, I think he might have transcribed, which I can pay for that, and it's the writing actual notes themselves. It would have been the, the twelve, the next special meeting.
Yeah, yeah.
Other additions or corrections, no?
Yes, um, on the last page, it says council Lowry abstaining, I never abstained from a vote.
I saw my, my note, I was surprised by that as well, so I'll do...
What was your vote, yes or no?
I'm sure it was yes.
Okay, all right. Correct that to read, uh, yes.
Last page.
Okay. Other corrections? Hearing not further, uh, the motion to approve the minutes.
Everybody ready?
I'm getting ready.
Uh, I just have one more thing. Under the order of new business, it's the second page, I just wondered if we should add where it says...
I'm sorry, are you on the minutes here?
Yeah, on the minutes. Order of new business and it was about the, uh, the, uh, amending the budget?
Yes.
Second page.
Honestly, bottom of the...
First reading to amend the budget.
Yes.
I just kinda wondered if maybe we should put those totals in there, the added construction cost, um...
I can't, I, I also handed up that revised, uh, summary of the page.
Yeah, yeah, we added a patch, it would be, it would survive.
I could, we're pretty simple.
Everybody else ready?
Yes.
Any other questions? Addition, revision, changes, everybody good with it?
Did you make a motion? I'll second it.
Is it all yes in question?
Paul in favor?
Yes.
Oh, forget it.
I see Michelle's saying it, is she here to do it? You got the trailer of the report? Have you got a chance to look through the trailer of the report? If you have any moments, glance through it. We're doing well, honestly, as far as, uh, the overall budget. You have questions, woman? Now, if you're going to ask.
How are you wondering about the beautification? Often that looks like that answered that. Charges to that was, um, like it was decorations for Thanksgiving.
I know, I saw it.
Your question to me, Paul, was, um, you wanted to know the found, the beginning balance of $500 versus the way you thought it was.
Well, actually, um, I had thought the balance in the beautification fund was thirty-five-hundred. Actually, I believe Mr. Roberts thought that also, but then it was brought to light that the budget had been amended only to five hundred, so that kind of answered my question.
Yes, do you ask for five hundred?
No. Yeah, are you doing it?
The only thing that is running at this point negatively is our advertising budget. If everybody can find that, it's under, it's on the COVID, the whole government page. I creeped in and talking about that.
Yes.
I'm sorry, it's four, isn't it? Well, it's four.
It's four pages, it's ten, three, it's on the spreadsheet, yes.
Through, uh, seven hundred and forty-four dollars and some eight cents in the red.
Oh.
A lot of publications with the Grand County News over the past couple of months, so it's very confusing, of course, but it's just... We're itemized by each bill, so I can, you know, any questions that I can do at the same records, uh, and quickly the last couple of months.
Well, do we have to amend the budget for that, or are you...
Yeah, we don't, but we don't have to do it right now.
All right.
We are going to have to amend the budget to put that, add in to that fund. Every special meeting, that's called, of course, adds to that.
Yeah.
Of course, every time we advertise or output, it adds to that. Anytime we have something...
There's, there's...
There's, adds to that, any kind of news, any kind of newspaper adds, adds to that number.
Yeah, when we did the budget and I, I knew that some of these totals were real low...
Yes.
But at the time, we were trying to make, um, try to balance because of the all that increase in the endowments at that time.
I understand, but... All right, anybody still need time to look through the trailer's report? Anybody got any other questions on the trailer's report?
Do you want to?
Who is that?
Reflectors for street signs, some signs in the dark areas where the headlights located in direction. I didn't mind, but it's...
Tell about the reflections, it gets screwed onto the metal post?
Yes. Just one informational point I can make toward the beginning, the number of reviews that we did, two CDs matured in November, they were processed, the CD rates were extremely low, point three percent kind of thing. Um, so we actually went to a money market fund with Pork Bank, uh, the rate was near more than double, they were point six five percent, but it's also flexible. We can change that at any point in time, CD go back to a different rate, we can convert that to a CD, just a heads up. So Jim and I talked about this a little bit in detail. The one maturing in December is a, a larger value CD. And we have two more in February, so we're gonna work with the bank to make sure we're finding the best rates for the city and then we'll...
Moving there may not move depending on what they're saying, but we'll keep everybody up on...
Just a heads up, that's why I wanted to...
I have a question, Sean.
Yes, ma'am.
On our budget, it shows, um, I believe it's nineteen hundred and thirty-three dollars for each, um, for each subdivision, thank you. Subdivision, how, which, how, how did you separate this to come out of the subdivision?
It's the magic of the Excel spreadsheet.
Well, you will have to show me how that worked out.
No, I have reasonable explanation, but it can be one more second if you remember where it was. Okay, so, um, the city went out, JD went out and bought sixty-seven street signs, stop signs, uh, speed limit signs, and basically have a, an inventory to go through the city and start canvassing replacements of old signs that need to be taken care of. So I had a bill of a thousand sixty-two dollars from Boone County, by the way, excellent pricing of the signage. That came in, so I took that number about my three and I spread it out.
All right. You just said you're canvassing the city.
Well, enough signage to, yeah.
Not have person... So that implies it was a line item for three subdivisions.
You're right.
With the potential of still having money left over, if that didn't work, to speed bump these streets.
I totally agree with you. Okay, before we go too far down that road, I've asked Michelle to look into the, uh, traffic control, uh, ideas that are out there. Michelle, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
You trying to ignore me?
I can hear you.
Okay, and we're going to be looking at, at some alternative speed bumps are still not approved, speed bumps arguably can be done, but we're, there's been a recent, there's been some research done on that through the Nelson County Attorney's Office, we've done a lot of good work on it. And then we're gonna, when Michelle has a chance to get up to speed on some of that, we're gonna meet and we'll discuss that, what we need to do as far as that goes. But the allocation that he made was simply to spread it out so that it wasn't just, just all coming out of one pot, it was to show that the, that the signs were spread over different portions of the city. Doesn't mean they can't be put back together, we need to.
And Jim, I spoke about this before as well, we said that, you know, I go with the allocate the cost to our portion of the, um, point work section, for example, it neatly, it's just an allocation, it's QuickBooks, it's a classification, I dumped it in those categories and that's where we're at, so I wanted to show that and talk to it.
Okay, so how much was it for the, for the signs?
A thousand sixty-two point...
So a thousand sixty-two plus the two hundred and two?
Yes.
Or was that two oh two included?
Combined.
Combined?
Yes.
Another question in the trailer's report?
We're not discussing credit card yet, right? Oh, yes, the whole time. But, um, I don't know if it's relevant or not, but some of the things that we're buying are getting charged back, I don't know if...
It is relevant, I looked at it today, uh, we are exempt, uh, but it's a process, you, you take the form, you go, if you don't have the form, you get charged. I made a mistake when I bought the TV, I didn't have the form with me, so I paid twelve bucks I shouldn't have, honestly. Uh, that happens before, but we're trying to address that each time that that comes up to make sure if we have blank forms with them and we go out so that doesn't happen again. And sometimes, honestly, it's just more trouble if it's worth a buck or two, you know, to those kinds of things.
I'll give you a prime example, you buy something on Amazon versus, say, Target, you can save thirty dollars versus eight dollars in taxes and in no time, fully, it comes up. But, yeah, we, we have a packet for businesses that pay their taxes, except that.
The shipping, you might save more by paying the tax and do the shipping free than you do by paying it, so, yes, we're aware of that.
Appreciate you bringing that up, thank you.
What, what is the lockbox payment?
It's a terminology that Pork Bank uses on a credit card payments, there's a payment from last, last month. Six hundred dollars in change, I guess.
It was eight ninety-seven.
Yeah, it was a big bill last month. Their credit card last month included the QuickBooks annual subscription of six hundred and eleven dollars. Those are one-time payment last month, the payment as usual. Yeah, the lockbox come with that.
Other comments or concerns or questions on the trailer's report?
I make a motion, we approve it.
I'll second it.
Second, Paul. Me and those in favor, please signify by the up of the right hand, that prepare your hands. Michelle, you okay with it? I see your hand, Michelle.
Yeah.
Okay, got your hand up?
Yeah, waving it around.
All right, we got it. Okay, we still have that law enforcement report. Uh, we do have the final reports, the teachers coming, just, do you want to pull that thing over or stand right there, have you more comfortable?
Yes, sir. Pull your handies out, just follow.
Oh. Pretty good.
Hi, hi, hi.
That's not pulling it in the car these days. It's structurally enhanced. We're all shut, Mr. D. There you go, sir.
Thank you.
Mayor? I see, structurally enhanced. Structurally enhanced.
How are you doing?
A magistrate, since you're here, I'd like to give you one, that way you know where we're at and if you'd proceed, boss.
Thank you, sir, appreciate that.
Ms. Bowman, I have, uh, a copy of our responses that I'm giving to Mr. McColan, so you can pick that up and if you're ready, now.
Thank you very much, sir.
Folks, you wanna take a look at that for a second? I really am wanting to get an email that works for everyone, uh, some of the emails that I've got keep getting kicked back, I would like to be able to get this to you in advance so that you can take a look at, any questions, come up, either contact me or bring them forth in the meeting. Lisa?
Get ahold of me, we'll, we'll figure it out.
Yes, sir, thank you.
You can always text me, chief.
I'm sorry?
You take the picture and text it to me.
We, we have one email that's...
Okay, yeah, I'll take that. Look, I'm still from the generation that's amazed by Atari, so I didn't think about it, I thank you, Dana.
There's always that one. He's our one.
At half the time, I think the electronics just need to be given a bath. Anyway, the cobra is upon us, uh, we're finishing maintenance on the rigs. We've had to go through the NMPA inspection, which is costly, but it's, it's required. Uh, we have received a phone call that, um, the ISO or insurance safety organization, um, will be coming in and inspecting us in the early part of two thousand and twenty, and we want to maintain our rig. Uh, we are a five. Back ten years ago, we were an eight. Uh, Chief Owens Prior did a lot of good work to start us on the track of getting up here and to give you something to compare that to, the city of Dry Ridge and the city of Williams Town and the city of Walker are all fours. What do they have that we don't?
Eight.
Eight. So I am pretty proud of the fact that we worked ourselves up to a five and we're really pushing now that we have aerial, updated techs, more communication capabilities, I'm really hoping that we're gonna be able to be nudging on that four. That would be a, a nice little feather in our hats. Other than that, run volume is picking up. And any questions right now? If not, then I'll shut up.
Would you just explain, especially for our viewers, uh, why it's important to get that rating?
Your ISO sets your insurance rates for the area that you live in for everything, from what kind of rates on municipal bonds will be charged against you to city insurance for operation, to your health insurance, motorcycle, boat, homeowners, renters. The higher that number is, you can estimate that a person will pay one hundred and seventy-three dollars per year for every point that we are elevating. Ten means absolutely no fire coverage, one is the best you could possibly give, and there's only two ones in the entire nation. That is, uh, Scottsdale, Arizona, and a fire department in New York. So as such, the lower down you get, the more money we're able to save. However, it takes work. Uh, they look at training hours, they look at undergrads, they look at, uh, the quality of equipment, they even look at hand tools, then they look at water supply, then they look at roads and access. And all of that goes to a big formulae that they turn around after putting this under a microscope and then tell us, you know, what our rating is. So for us to, from nineteen, uh, from two thousand and ten to this point, and we're able to get a five, and that's not just within the city, that is also in the county as well. We only have a very few places that have eights and nines, and they're way out there. But that's, that's pretty good, pretty good.
Appreciate you.
Yes.
Wait, I have a question, please.
Yes, ma'am.
I noticed that the overdose, um, opioid is certified, is that going up?
Well, you saw that, um, for two months, we had zero opioids and then we had three this month. Oh, wait a minute, I have to back up for just a second. I made a mistake on September's, uh, numbers and we did have one opioid. I went back and double-checked the figures and I'm so proud last month because we had gone two months with no opioid dispatches. We had one. So, one in two months is not bad. We had three last month. Unfortunately, people are being laid off, we're now having more people isolated with COVID, the number of dispatches for opioids this month is up there. I can know of six that we've had so far. And it's only the ninth of the month.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, ma'am. Other questions for the chief, anyone?
Um, the, the city pays for those, right?
Pays for what, please?
The shots that you give them, the...
No.
Okay.
No.
So it's not out of...
The fire department does not administer Narcan.
Gotcha.
Our medical director, Dr. Hunt Lee, all right, and he does not want firefighters administering the Narcan. And it's very smart because sometimes there are some circumstances that the administration of Narcan can do more harm than good.
Gotcha.
So when you have responding personnel, we need EMTs to be on that scene.
Gotcha.
And we just don't have the numbers for that.
Plus, that saves us money.
But we, we use bag valve masks, we use oxygen, and that will keep them supported and alive until the EMS crew gets there, the paramedics and the EMTs can decide whether to administer or not.
Gotcha. Thank you.
And yes, on the money thing, for a brick of ten, you're looking at eight hundred and eighty dollars.
And I know it was expensive.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Other questions for the chief on the report? Thank you, chief. Uh, we're going to general items now, uh, I wanted to report to you that Todd has agreed to, uh, make a database of the street sports. He's, uh, researching all the streets in the city, he's going to try to pull as much data as he can, uh, we've gotten some cooperation, a lot of cooperation actually, from the PBA's office, he's given us access to all of the, uh, flats that he has and Todd's gonna try to get links with, uh, he's gonna try to get, uh, any information he can pull off of it, raise everything he can get for us so we can build a site map for Creighton so that no... There's been some questions raised, so we're, our maintenance responsibility is in, and we're gonna try to tie that down as quick as we can, so he'll, he'll keep us up as we're doing that. He is also, uh, has something he wants to bring up concerning speaker purchases, and I'm assuming you're talking about these, is that right?
Ah, no.
No, we'll talk about whatever it is you're talking about.
What I got, or what I'm looking at is...
There's way more than I needed. I didn't have my printer plugged in, and when I did, I could use that for all these things. Those other ones, can you just go on and over that? I know Michelle can't see this, so you can be as descriptive as you can.
Okay, uh, I need one, I need one. What I'm looking at is basically a monitor, a monitor speaker that, uh, we can get away from these, basically, computer speakers, it would sit out in front, um, it's where the audience can hear, the cameras can hear, uh, feedback would be minimal, there's a, it's a, for Michelle, I'll go a little more descriptive for you. It's a JBL ten-inch monitor speaker, it would sit pretty much right in front of Jim on the floor. We can either go with a ten-inch or a twelve-inch, I'm really, you're not gonna see much of a difference, I mean, it's just up to you, it's the same thing, just one speaker is two inches bigger than the other. Uh, and the price is two hundred and seventy-four dollars from Amazon. I think that would greatly take, it would take care of this room well, and even with the cameras in the back of the room, we would be able to record it and everybody would be able to hear everything clearly. And on top of that, if we can get a clear audio for the videos that I put on to YouTube, the, uh...
Close captioning.
What's the word I'm looking for?
Close captioning.
Close captioning. Little word. Every now and then, it'll pick it up and then sometimes it guesses at words that...
Every now and then, it'll pick it up, and then sometimes it guesses at words that, that's not the word that was said. But if we could get a clear audio, and we'd pick it up for the hard of hearing, and everybody could read along, or not.
So it's going to mark, it's going to just amplify what these things are doing now?
Correct.
That thing's useless. And we have had a lot of comments on Facebook about people not being able to hear, so I, I think it is relevant.
As long as the speakers are behind you, you're going to have trouble. Anybody have a motion concerning these speakers, if they care, maybe so that we can get in discussion here?
I may get a motion, do I give you?
Got a motion, the very first, second, Paula, horizontal for a question or discussion, anyone have anything they'd like to ask Todd concerning it?
You going to hook it up? Yeah, you going to hook it up?
It's plug it in, and you plug it in.
Zero decision.
Two wires. It, it's wireless, or other than, other than hooked to the wall, then. It's going to put it to the wall, and then you're going to have a wire pretty much like this one right here.
Yeah, you're going to need an extension wire like that, probably. I can look at it.
It's going to go from that box over there. To this box, that comes with all that. We remember, you give us.
You might have to buy the extension wire.
I might have to buy the extension wire, so add. I'll tell you what, let's hold on, when I, when I get off the hot seat, I'll look it up real quick, and we'll get a, sure, Howard, too, he's got a question for you. Uh, councilman, would it be able to be suspended from the ceiling? Because if you could suspend it.
Yes.
And then run it through the ceiling tiles, it would not be unseemly or have to be removed around?
Yes.
But then by placing it right above at the ceiling, you run your wires, and then you could use your two monitor speakers that you have up there, so that the council persons could also hear while it's projecting from the back. As long as we don't keep moving this room around like we have been in the past, and the tables stay where they're at.
You could always, you could always later put the mount and the wires, everything there, and you could just mount the speaker when you need it up here, and then down here, run the cable, too.
And just for future, in the next two or three months, I'm going to present a overhead projector to where things like this. Everybody can see, the fire report can go up on it, it'll all be computer generated, and we just shoot through them all.
I like that.
I like that as a visitor, because we, then we would be able to see what you see.
Other questions at this moment concerning the speakers? You got a motion, taking on the floor, other discussion? Hearing done, let's take a vote. Uh, I'll just call it, Dan?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
I.
Yes.
Yes.
And Michelle, yes or no? Okay, you're talking about the ten-inch, that was the, that was the motion, right?
The two seventy-four plus a wire.
Okay. Budget allocation, where should we go? Uh, probably, we'll look at it in a minute, probably. Okay, let's see, Todd, you got something else that you wanted to bring up, if we, if we think, uh. Oh, I just wanted to, uh, point out, we did purchase.